Good evening, everyone. Let me welcome you to our Burke County Board of Commissioners meeting, regular meeting, for Tuesday, October the 21st, 2014. Madam Clerk, everyone is present with the county attorney and the county manager. I have excused Commissioner Taylor to attend another event tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, I do welcome you again. I would ask that you silence all your mobile devices for me, if you have those with you. And also, if you're up at the front table, if you would, please lean as close to the microphones as you can, so Kay can get recorded. We're very fortunate tonight to have with us the Reverend Eddie Button, who is the Minister of Youth out at Burke-Mont Baptist Church, and our Burke County 4-H group with John Davis, who is going to do our Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll stand with me in just a moment, we'll do our invocation, and immediately after the invocation, John, if you will line your 4-Hers up, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand with me, ladies and gentlemen.
Would you pray with me? Father, it does not miss our attention that you are concerned with the affairs of men. We thank you for that, and so tonight, Lord, we ask for wisdom. Father, we thank you for those who are called to govern us and for their elected opportunity to bless us with their wisdom and knowledge. Father, thank you for a community that can come together and work together and trust that you lead us. We would ask that you would lead us tonight to places that are important for our community. Father, to opportunities for future growth, to the opportunity, Lord, also, to thank you and be grateful stewards of what we've been blessed with. We ask all this in your name, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge my head to clear thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living, for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
Thank you very much. If y'all will stay right there, the Commissioners are going to come down. We want to take a picture with you, and we're going to put it over there on the big board, so you can come back and see it. So gentlemen and ladies, if we can move down. All right, parents, move on up front, so you can get some good pictures. Come on, don't be embarrassed. All right, tell us when you're in there. We good?
Just come on.
My goodness, John gave this pretty good. That will be the approval of the meeting minutes. We have minutes from August the 19th, 2014, our regular meeting, September the 2nd, 2014, which was pre-agenda, September the 16th, 2014, which is a regular meeting, and September the 22nd, 2014, a recess meeting. I think you've had plenty of time to look over these. If there's any additions or corrections, please let me know. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the minutes is printed.
You've heard the motion from Wayne. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that'll be four to nothing. Moving to the approval of the agenda, we are removing consent item number five at the request of JCPC. They need to vote on another matter, on that amendment. We're adding presentation item number four, which is the Health Department Ebola update, and then we have supplemental information for presentation, item number one. To item number one, then we have a consent item number nine from the county manager. With these in mind, I will entertain a motion for an amended agenda.
Again, Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the agenda is printed.
Heard the motion by Wayne. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that'll be four to nothing. All right, presentations. Our first presentation this evening will be from the Burke County Public Schools, a presentation of the financial data for the period of July the 1st, 2014 through September the 30th, 2014, and that will be presented by Keith Lawson, the Burke County Public Schools Finance Officer. Keith, if you'll come on up to the podium, I'll be fine. Good to see you, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Carswell, members of the board, county officials. Here tonight to report to you fiscal year-end 13-14, unaudited results for Burke County Public Schools operations, as well as the first quarter of 2014-15. In 2013-14, our total estimated operating revenues for Burke County Public Schools was As you can see, our actuals, we came in at $102,41,000, so just short of our anticipated revenues at 99.1%. Of those revenues, the county commissioners' allocation to us consisted of 13.6% of those total anticipated revenues. My second page is the report of revenues as expended by purpose and function. We've gone through these in previous quarters, so I won't go through these historical numbers. But if you'll look to the 13-14 first column, which is our budget, and it's the purpose functions which the commissioners and the county chose to fund, the first item was our 5100, regular instructional services, which primarily consist of classroom support and instruction. The budget was $4,333,000 rounding. As you can see to the far right, total expended was $4,57,000, so just under our budget. The calls for the reduction there over anticipated spending was that when we began the school year last year, we received approximately $1.3 million less in state allocations than anticipated. As a result, we were forced to make reductions, and then some of the support in fringes that supported the positions that were reduced resulted in the savings in this category. Our next category, which was the 5300 Alternative Services Program, which consists of our Halliburton Academy, the budget was $341,000. We came in at $261,000. The difference in those operations was the fact that we received a SIG grant to help support that continued operation of the Halliburton Alternative Program. Next category would be the 5800 School-Based Support Services on budget, or 5500, excuse me. The 5800 School-Based Support Services, budget of $696,000, of which was expended $418,000. We were very thankful to the state, however, overall funding from the state was reduced, that we were able to receive a grant for safety resource officers from the state, which enabled us to relieve our local budget in that category. Our next category was 6500 Operational Services. That consists of facilities, operations, as well as maintenance and upkeep of $8,202, what was expended was $8,276, so just a fraction over the original budget. And then payments to other governmental units, a budget of $409,000, of which was expended $476,000, was our percentage-wise most significant increase over anticipated budget, and that was due to increased charter school enrollment in Burke County. So total expended, $13,546,000. Revenues received was $14,434,000. Now, you would anticipate there a surplus, but these are only the categories the county funded for the 13-14 year. In total, actually, we utilized fund balance, and we utilized a total fund balance of $1.5 million versus our original forecasted use of fund balance of $2.1 million. Any questions concerning the 13-14 financial results?
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Keith's report. Anybody have any questions or concerns? All right, Keith, it appears there's no questions or anything. Anything else to add, or that will be it?
He's got the...
I'm going through the 14-15, our first quarter results.
Go ahead.
Won't be as lengthy. Again, our estimated revenues for the 14-15 fiscal year, including all sources, state, federal, local, fines and forfeitures, our special revenue funds, which consist of various federal, state, and local grants, as well as allocation of fund balance, we anticipate $101.7 million, which is actually a reduction over our previous year of about $1.2 million. Of that, through September, year-to-date, we have expended $23.8 million of that $101, or 23.4%. So at this point, we're right on target as far as anticipated revenues. Our next category, which is at a less of detail than it was for the 13-14 year, is the 14-15 Local Budget. Regular instruction budget basically of $6 million, of which we have expended $713,000 at this point. Support Services, $9.8 million, of which we've expended $2.4, and payments to other governmental units, $55,000 of $484 allocated has been expended. Now, these results would lead you to believe, if things were flat, that we're far underspending our anticipated budget for this year, but as you know, the school system, teachers are 10-month employees, child nutrition workers are 9-month employees, and we have various positions that are 11-month and 12-months. So our expenses do tend to ebb and flow, with our second quarters and fourth quarters being our heaviest spending quarters. So we will be, after our second quarter results, more in target with our received revenues at that point.
All right, gentlemen, any questions? Any comments? All right, anything else to add to that one?
No, sir.
All righty. Without objection, that report will be received and entered into the official minutes tonight. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, gentlemen and lady.
All right, moving on to item number two for presentation is our Cooperative Extension, National 4-H Week Presentation and Proclamation, presented by John Davis, our extension agent, and the 4-H young people that are here today. John?
First off, thank you, Chair Carswell, and Commissioners and County officials for allowing us to be here tonight and always to visit with you. We always enjoy visiting with our 4-Hers and volunteers to give them this opportunity to see local government in action as part of their ongoing 4-H projects. Each year, as we change and have another busy year with Cooperative Extension and 4-H, we're always excited to see program growth and new opportunities, both for our volunteers and for our 4-Hers. This year, as you may know, Cooperative Extension celebrated its centennial anniversary. So over 100 years, extension, over 100 years with Extension means that the 4-H program has seen lots of changes throughout those years. But the core of head, heart, hands, and health, like we said in the pledge, those haven't changed. Those core values within the 4-H program still remain. But we're also proud that with those traditions come a lot of 4-H opportunities to teach youth through new technology, especially focused around the STEM initiative with science, technology, engineering, and math. But we can't forget our core of leadership, public speaking, citizenship, and community service. So over time, as we've adapted, these new opportunities for our 4-Hers in science and technology open lots of doors for them in the future in their education. We're proud of our 4-H community clubs and their growth in the past year, and also our continued collaboration and partnerships, both with our homeschool communities and with Burke County Public Schools and our other private schools here in the county. We're very pleased to be able to be in those classrooms and in those club meetings to provide 4-H opportunities. We now currently have a little over 1,700 youth that are participating in 4-H programs here in Burke County, so we're really pleased with that level of participation, both in our clubs, through schools, and at other community events. Tonight, we're very thankful for the Commissioner's proclamation that we have received, recognizing National 4-H Week, which we celebrated October the 5th through the 11th. National 4-H Week each year is a time for us to celebrate 4-H on the state, local, and national levels. Tonight, as you can see, we've got a nice crowd here. I'm very pleased. I'm always excited to be able to represent, as a county official, these youth that are involved in our program. So I brought a small sample here tonight, and they're going to come up and tell you a little bit about what they've done this year in 4-H, what their project work has been on, and how that's making a difference to them.
John, you want to pull up my... There you go.
Hello, my name is Georgia Wood, and I am a member of the Great Adventures 4-H Club and the Burke County 4-H Beekeepers. Starting in January, I began on my first beekeeping project. For six years now, the 4-H program matches four heres with beekeeping mentors from the community. Farm Bureau helps with providing starter hives and bees, so then we can begin learning. Now I have thousands of 4-H products at home. The beekeeping project also has taught me a lot about bees and how to take care of them. I have also learned how to be responsible and how to work with others. This has been a great 4-H opportunity for my family and I. My favorite part of 4-H was meeting new people like my mentor Jeff. He and his wife even went to my play. It was lots of fun.
Hello, my name is Jamie Berry, and I'm a past 4-H County Council President and a 2014 graduate of Patton High School. In 4-H, I have been a part of many projects from horses and cattle to community service and 4-H electric. Through all these projects, my biggest learning opportunity has been developing leadership skills. I have learned to speak in front of the large groups, how to teach others, and how to be a positive part of my community as a young adult. Being a part of the 4-H program greatly prepared me for my college by teaching me how to work together with others and how to set goals to accomplish. My favorite part of 4-H is to participate in the community.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Thompson, and I'm currently serving as the Vice President and Reporter for the Burke County Youth Council, and I'm also a member of the Great Adventures 4-H Club. This year, my 4-H project has been in science and technology. One big 4-H STEM project we participate in each year is the 4-H National Youth Science Day Experiment, or, yes, Science Day, held in conjunction with National 4-H Week. The experiment is designed for students in 5th grade to 7th grade. This year, the experiment is called Rockets to the Rescue, and it focuses on aerospace engineering. Students this year built paper rockets to launch in an effort to learn about delivering food to areas impacted by natural disasters. This year, more than 400 Burke County students and 4-Hers will participate in this science program. In the 4-H program, I like learning through hands-on activities like this and being able to teach others what I've learned. My favorite part about 4-H is having fun, meeting new people, and doing new activities.
Hello, my name is Emily Shupin.
My name is Ellie Shupin.
And my name is Jessica Hansen.
We are members of the Showstoppers 4-H Club. This year, we began our first 4-H market land projects.
We got our lambs during the summer and have been showing them at local fairs and livestock shows.
We also participated in the Cataba Valley Showmanship Circuit, where we competed against other 4-Hers from our neighboring counties.
Our project was wrapped up last week as we showed our lambs at the North Carolina State Fair.
We learned responsibility by taking care of our lambs on a daily basis.
We also learned communication skills by talking with show judges.
We have earned many awards and ribbons this summer, and we look forward to showing our lambs again next year.
My favorite part about 4-H is showing lambs.
My favorite part of 4-H is getting to go to the fair.
My favorite part of 4-H is learning about and showing lambs.
Hello, my name is Molly Suarez, and I am currently serving as the West District 4-H Council President. On behalf of our District 4-H Council and our Burke County 4-H Youth Council, thank you for letting us present for you guys tonight. We have had another eventful year in 4-H, and we have a few 4-Hers here tonight that have told you about their projects. This year, my project focus has been leadership and citizenship. By serving as an officer in 4-H, I have learned about the election process and especially how to be an effective leader. Thank you again for sponsoring the youth summit held in conjunction with the County Commissioners Conference this August. Opportunities like these in 4-H help make the best better here in Burke County. Through 4-H, I have met some of the most amazing people and people that I look up to. The opportunities in 4-H gives youth is such a broad variety. I am grateful for the several opportunities I've had, from leading workshops, attending events, and speaking like here tonight. My favorite part about 4-H is definitely the opportunities and people that you get to meet. Again, thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for your continued support with Burke County Cooperative Extension and the 4-H program.
Thank you, Georgia, Jamie, Nick, Emily, Ellie, Jessica, and Molly. Each year, the list gets a little bit longer. We try to fit it into our timeframe. We want to let you know a little about all the things that the 4-Hers are doing. So again, thank you for allowing us to present tonight and for letting these kids tell you a little bit about, a real small part about what they do, and for letting us share this celebration with you. As always, we invite you to come and join us for any of our Extension and 4-H events. You're always more than welcome to come and join us to see what the kids are involved in. You're more than welcome to come with us. I think everybody needs to come and travel with us for a summer fun day and see what summer day camp is all about. You're more than welcome. We'll save you a spot on the van, and you can ride along for the day, or maybe we can come visit one day. That might work out the best. So if any of you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you tonight about our program.
Anybody have any questions for John or the children? Well, let me thank you guys so much for what you did. Some of these little girls go to my church, and I do appreciate that. Molly went with us to Asheville to the County Commissioners Association Annual Meeting, and one of Molly's projects was that she had to interview two Commissioners, and she got Commissioner Carroll and myself. So that was the hardest interview she said she'd ever done. So I don't know whether she wants to go in the communication field after that or not, but we do appreciate that. Gentlemen, we've received the presentation. Do I have a motion to adopt a proclamation?
So move.
I have a motion to adopt the proclamation. Now, therefore, I, Johnny Carswell, Chairman of the Burke County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim, October the 5th through the 11th, 2014, as National 4-H Week in Burke County. I urge the people of this community to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program and these special children that enhances our young people's interest in their future as part of Burke County 4-H Youth Development, and to join us in recognizing the unique partnership between our country, our county, and our state university system, adopted this 21st day of October, 2014. Ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, John.
Thank you again.
4-0, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. It was 4-0. I got excited by all the kids being up here. Moving on to item number three is our Western Piedmont Community College Presentation of the Financial Data for the Period... Don't leave us, you can stay. Presentation of the Financial Data for the Period of July 1st, 2014 through September the 30th, 2014, presented by Sandy Holman, WPEC chief financial officer. Sandy?
Good evening, and thank you for having us tonight. I'd like to present the financial data for Western Piedmont Community College for fiscal year 2015, reviewing our first quarter expenditures. If you'll look at the first worksheet, we'll look at state funds first. We have a total budget of $16,806,456. Our funding formula allocation is $16,407,573, which is 7% less than last year. Throughout the year, though, we receive additional funding for specific uses such as customized training for industries, grants, and carryforward funds. As of September 30th, 2014, we have expended 20.5%, or $3,447,482, of our budget. Salaries and benefits are the highest expenditure category at 93%. However, there are expenditures for supplies and equipment that are encumbered but not yet paid for, since we are on a cash basis system. The next columns are the county budget, in the light blue section. Our current budget is $2,431,329, which includes county appropriations, rental income generated by the college, and any interest income. Our rental and interest income have declined from previous years, but our county appropriations did increase this year. We have expended 21.3%, or $517,840, through September 30th, 2014, mostly for plant operations and maintenance. Our fund balance is currently $129,605. 75% of our county expenditures are related to salaries and benefits and utilities. That's where a majority of our funding goes. The last category is our institutional funds, and we have budgeted $9,106,105 for the year, and this amount includes financial aid, other state financial assistance for our students that the college receives, self-supporting courses provided to our students, our bookstore, and other miscellaneous accounts. Most of these accounts are restricted in nature as to their designations. Over 70% is for financial student aid, and then another 15% for our bookstore operations. This year, we are excited that we received the Duke Energy Grant for $185,000 to be used for equipment for our industrial systems program, or which is commonly referred to as Mecatronics. So we're excited about what's to come there. The total combined college budget, all funding sources for 2014-15, is $28,343,890, of which we have expended 27%. This is on trend for what we normally do in the first quarter of the year, just being conservative and still being in line with our budget. The second page is a graph of our state funding and expenditures that we've had through September 30th, 2014, which just shows the expenditures in a little bit in broader categories that are more recognizable other than the purpose codes. And as you can see, 93% was spent on salaries and benefits. The next sheet is the county expenditures through September 30th in the same format, broken... broken down into the categories where you can see salaries and benefits and utilities, again, are over 75% of our expenditures. The last item is the supplemental page. That's just a summary of 2013-14 since we did not have a presentation for the final quarter of the fiscal year 2013-14. Are there any questions on the budget presentation for Western Piedmont?
Gentlemen, you've heard the report. Any questions?
Sandy, I just wanted to ask one question. During the decline in the economy, enrollments were real high. Have enrollments sort of eased off some right now, or?
Yes. You know, when the economy was going down during the recession, we had unprecedented high growth in enrollment, and over the last two, two and a half years, the enrollment has gone down. And so, that does-
Maybe a percentage? Any idea of percentage-wise, or?
This is kind of a ballpark percentage, but it's about probably 20%.
All right, good, thank you.
Over the last two and a half years.
You think that will go back up?
I think it will level off. It won't go up to the rates that we had in those three years during that recession period because that was unprecedented across the state. So, it won't get that high again, but it will level off and increase some.
Any other questions or comments? All right, as usual, Sandy, just a great report. Gentlemen, this report is for informational purposes only, no action is required, but it will be made part of the minutes. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, we have added this on at the request of the County Manager and myself as to give an update report on Ebola, and that's going to be presented by Rebecca McLeod, our Health Director. Rebecca?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, and Brian, and everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity just to come and update you on Ebola. Just note that at this point in time, there are not any cases in North Carolina. There have not been any new cases. You can watch the TV and hear all the horror stories of what has gone on so far, but we wanted to come and present tonight, or myself, as public health to let you know what we're doing in regards for preparation. And we've been communicating and will communicate with our multiple community partners, which include the hospitals, the medical providers, emergency management, EMS, through multiple methods. We usually do fax blasts, emails, face-to-face meetings. And we're working very closely with Carolina's healthcare system, Blue Ridge, and other medical partners to maintain our effectiveness, to make sure that we keep the community safe and when we're prepared. We were charged last week from the State Department of Public Health on contact tracing. That will be our mission as public health as Ebola goes forward, to stop the spread of transmission, is we are responsible for finding all the contacts, if there is a contact, and then monitoring them for 21 days. So, just to let you know that. The state last week on 10/13 did put a 1-800 number out, and it's out there if the general public would like to call. They also did put the website on the State Department of Public Health. I've given that information to Case so that y'all would have it. We did an article with the newspaper yesterday in conjunction with the hospital because I was over there for another meeting. It was timely. We were able to do it jointly because we do a lot of things jointly. But I just wanted to let you know that we do have our EpiTeam, which is an epidemiological team, in place. We have activated them. We have bet, bet two weeks now in a row. We'll meet... This week will be the third week. And our team members are from different places in the community, from all the major state institutions, as well as medical providers, the hospital, emergency management, the Fire Marshal's Office. We have a lot of people who come together to communicate, to plan. It takes a lot. And we're sending out all the up-to-date information as we get it. That's real short, brief. I can supply you with any information. It changes on a daily basis on what we know. The most current change that we have is that the PPE, Personal Protective Equipment for Healthcare Workers, has changed. The CDC has changed that guidance, and the state is working on supplying us with the information so that we can properly train and have a trained trainer. Right, Jason? We have to have a properly trained trainer and an on-site manager to watch people when they dawn and off the equipment. So, that was just very short, brief, to the point. If you have any questions, I'd try to answer them.
Gentlemen, any questions for Rebecca?
Mr. Chairman, did I understand, Rebecca, that should a case occur in Burke County, it would be your department's responsibility to follow and track that case and any contacts that person may have had? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Whenever there is a case or a suspected case, then we do the contact tracing, which is where we have to ask that person very specific questions, and then we follow up with them for 21 days. It's only case by case whether or not they continue to work because if they do, just remember, if they don't have symptoms, they're not infectious. But it depends on what their risk factor was, and they're not infectious until they develop symptoms. And then that's low, and then it develops into high.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Rebecca. It appears that we are where we need to be. If something should occur, God forbid that it does, but I thank you for that and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, and I will continue as the year goes on. Hopefully, we've seen enough, but if we haven't, I'll come back to you again.
All right. We need no action on this. This will be part of the minutes again. We have no scheduled public hearings for tonight. Madam Clerk, has anybody signed up for informal public comments?
No, sir, we have no speakers tonight.
All right. From there, we'll move into our consent agenda, and at this time, I'll recognize our County Manager, Brian Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you have approximately eight, I believe, items. BOC, Resolution in Support of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Clerk, appointments, reappointments to voluntary agriculture board. Number three, clerk, appointment to the Burke County Board of Adjustment. Number four, clerk, resolution establishing policy for unsealing closed session minutes. Item six, tax office EMS collections report for August 2014. Item seven, tax office tax release, refund, and VTS report for September 2014. Item eight, tax office tax collection reports for September 2014. And item nine, county manager, appointment of Deputy County Manager Paul Ims as acting county manager while I'm absent next week.
Brian, give us just a little bit of information on the appointment of Paul, why that occurred.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you're aware, BDI, I will be doing an economic development trip to Norway to meet with the new CEO of Ekornis and discuss their presence in Burke County and their possible future as they move forward, if there's any potential for expansion. I believe, as far as I know, this is the first type of trip of this nature that we've had, and as you're aware, I am also the Chairman of the Board for the Burke Development Corporation. So, I'm going to be a long ways away. I was not sure whether I would have good email contact, and I felt it in the best interest of the county to have Mr. Ims act as the county manager in my absence until I return approximately one week after, well, somewhere around November the 1st.
And we do expect you to return.
I would certainly hope so.
We set a date on this that we end, so Paul only has a limited time to be the acting county manager. If you go over there and get married, we've got a problem or something.
That would be unexpected.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard the motion by Wayne. All in favor, raise your right hands. Be four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Moving on to items for decision, our first item is from community development funding for the 2014-2015 fiscal year to support the Lake James Loop Trail implementation efforts, and that will be presented by Scott Carpenter, our Deputy County Manager, Planning Director. Hey, Scott.
How are you, Mr. Carswell? Gentlemen, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. What I'm asking for basically is $7,500 from the general fund balance, and this money that I'm asking for is to continue our Lake James Loop Trail efforts that move us from the planning phase, which has been going on for a year. In September, the planning board approved the master plan, and that will be coming to you next month in November for final approval. But the process itself is basically could run into trouble because of funding. So, most of the funding for the Lake James Loop Trail that we actually have committed has been stuck under the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and the FERC process. We're not sure when that money's going to be released, but we believe it may be released in the first quarter of 2015. But of course, we've been hearing this for several years because there's a lot of support for the Lake James Loop Trail. As a matter of fact, we did over 1,000... We received over 1,000... Oh, gosh, I'm losing my train of thought here. When we did the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, we had over 1,000 people say that their number-one desire would be to hook up for recreational purposes Morganton to Lake James and to have a trail around Lake James. That walking is by far in Burke County the number-one thing that people would like to do when you base that on an age spectrum of 9 to 90. So, there's three things that I'd like to use the money for, and I'd like to use the money for obtaining easements. We already have two of the three major easements committed, and people are ready to go, and what we have to do is have surveys done, and we don't have money committed to that process. So, as soon as I get surveys, we should have two of the three easements in place. The other thing is to develop a marking system. So, based on the state trails program, we're going to be looking at wayfinding and what will the marking of the trail look like. We plan on putting trail on the ground as soon as four months. I know that's ambitious, but as these easements are secured, we're working with the bridge crew to go out and clear a 10-foot path along these easements and then to build a footpath where they've cleared out. So, what they'll do is clear out 10 feet, actually cut it about this high, and then they'll come in with a smaller footprint where they'll put a footpath in there. That way, we can start securing the trail around the lake, and we want to start marking it with a designated mark, which is actually going to be a feather about this big, and it'll be a light-toned green on that feather as you go around the lake. The other thing is to help the bridge crew with some of their expenses, and so I wanted to set aside $2,000 for equipment and various things, feeding them and other needs as they begin working. And they're very committed to this process. So, essentially, the reason I'm asking for the money is so that we don't wind up with a lull and lose energy and focus and commitment as we move forward with the Lake James Loop Trail and securing of the easements.
All right. You've heard the presentation by Scott. Any questions?
Scott, will there be like crusher rock on that trail eventually for bicycling or?
There could be in segments. So, what I'll do is of the funding that comes, so of the $1.1 million that's designated, we will set aside 10% into a different fund that we can go in and maintain those sections or add to it to make them passable. We also probably wind up with some areas that are boardwalk.
Any other questions? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board on Scott's request?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and appropriate $7,500 of general fund balance to begin acquiring necessary easements, establishing a trail identification and marking system, and to support the bridge crew with their efforts to begin the process of roughing in the trail.
All right. You've heard Jeff's motions. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. All opposed? That would be three to one, Madam Clerk. All right, Scott, thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving on to our next item will be from Department of Social Services... Excuse me. It will be from EMS, our inter-campus transport service agreement between Carolina's healthcare system and Blue Ridge Healthcare in Burke County, presented by Greg Curry, our EMS Director. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you're all well aware and has been well documented and publicized, Blue Ridge Healthcare recently has made some major decisions to kind of overhaul their healthcare system, and I'm proud to say Larry Carpenter is here, who's been my primary point of contact over the last two to three months of meetings and discussing this. We came together, Burke County and the Blue Ridge Healthcare system, to try and stay ahead of this because we knew it was coming down the pipe, and we didn't want to get surprised at the last minute. And we had some productive meetings. The primary thing that we wanted to emphasize is that with obviously all of your support, we've been very successful getting our emergency response times down, and we were concerned that if this created more volume, that that might affect that. They were very receptive to that, and I think we developed... There goes a quick response time as we speak. So, yeah, where was I? We had some productive meetings, and when it all came down to it, we basically decided that we were going to come to an agreement between Burke County and Blue Ridge Healthcare to basically have a flat fee upfront, a monthly flat fee. They were going to go ahead and pay us upfront, and we would perform the transports for them based on the changes that they made. And the changes essentially are, this is going to be new calls, so to speak. In the past, Valdez would have seen a patient in the emergency room, the doctor would have deemed it necessary for admission into the hospital, that patient would have been wheeled down the hall, put on the elevator, and taken to a room. As those specific dates, and I had them, they actually... Valdez did close their ICU the 15th of this month. They plan on no longer admitting medical patients the 21st of next month, and they'll no longer admit surgical patients the 24th of next month. So, therefore, those patients that would be getting admitted to the Valdez campus will now need transport to the Morganton campus for admission into the hospital. So, as you can see, it's going to create new business. The whole problem with this entire process is no one from the Blue Ridge Healthcare or from Burke County has any idea what that volume's going to be. So, we've been basing... Or we've based a lot on what the past is, what the current status is, and tried to project what the future is. So, we're going to work on this. We're going to be reviewing this. Major Black and I will be looking at these numbers every day to make sure we stay on top of this. We have a service agreement that has been written up. I believe you've all had a chance to review it, and it is for a year, but it's a 90-day review process. So, we're going to kick this off starting November 1st if it's approved, and then we will keep going back and reviewing it. And at the end of 90 days, we're going to find out if the flat fee that we agreed to is appropriate for the amount of volume that these changes have created and adjust accordingly. And I believe that's all I have at that point. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try and answer them.
All right, gentlemen, any questions for Greg?
I have one, Greg.
Yes, sir.
This kind of seems to me like it's kind of confusing. What is a necessity? I mean, why do we need this when we already have a team, emergency station at Valdez? Is it going to be above and beyond what they can handle?
Well, that's... And, Mr. Carroll, that's precisely the problem. We don't know. I didn't... None of us wanted to get to the position where these changes go into effect, and we all miss the calculations, and all of a sudden, our crews have eight or nine more trips, non-emergency trips, a day. And then we're relying on status quo to handle that drastic of an increase of volume. So, we don't know if this is even necessary, to be honest. That's kind of why the contract was written up the way that it was written up. This is something that we may... We're going to put an extra truck on starting whatever day we decide to, and after one week, we may decide we don't need that extra truck. The volume never became an issue. We basically are trying to predict a problem and have a solution already in place before that problem gets out of hand and, again, affects our response times. This could go from, we have an extra truck for one week, we may have an extra truck for a month, we may have an extra truck for a couple months, we may find out early on that we need an extra truck permanent because of the numbers. We just don't know what they're going to be. We're trying to stay proactive and not reactive, so to speak.
So, what you're asking, the commissioner's here to approve something, that we don't really know what we're approving? And we don't know how much it's going to cost because the language in this... In this information I have here, it talks about the fee that they're paying will help cover some of the cost.
That's correct.
So, actually, what you're asking us to do- So actually, what you're asking us to do is sign a blank check for you to be used when it's needed to be used? Is that basically what you're asking?
Well, I'm not asking us to write a check.
No, I'm not, you're asking the commissioners.
Well, no, no, sir. Basically, I believe Blue Ridge Healthcare is writing the check.
Well, $334,000 a year, that would be if it's 12-month period. It would seem to me that that would cover additional personnel and ambulance maybe that you would need, would it not?
Yes, it would. We believe it would. If the speculations are right, the Valdez Hospital were admitting at the time of this decision somewhere around five patients per day. Since the announcement came out that, and the announcement initially came out kind of wrong, they said Valdez is closed when they weren't closed, the process or the plan was started in motion, but since that, Valdez right now is admitting somewhere around three patients per day. So everything that we did and the numbers that we came up with and agreed to are based on the idea that there's going to be three more patients a day that are going to be needing transport across the county that never would have required transport in the past. So the numbers, the so-called check that they're willing to write and the extra ambulance, excuse me, the extra ambulance and the personnel are based on those three transports a day so that we get the patients out of their emergencies in a timely fashion, but our response times are not affected. We're going to stay on top of this, as I said, review this in 90 days. We may find out that the check that they are writing is far too big for the work that we're required to do. We may find out that the plan that we set or the solution we set in motion isn't fixing it to the degree that we want it and therefore, we're going to need to increase our resources and go back and discuss the size of the checks that Blue Ridge is going to pay. Like I said, the hardest part of all this, and I think the hospital would agree, the hardest part is the unknown, it's the unknown factor. So we're preparing for the worst-case scenario so that we are prepared, knowing that we may have to dial it up, dial it down as we start to see real numbers come in.
Yeah, that's my point here. If we approve this, then you talk about coming back, talking about resources that you need. It'll be approved in this, in this agreement that we're going to, you're asking us to do tonight. So in the near future, you don't need to come back to the commissioners again to ask for additional funding to do whatever is going to happen. So what we're asking here is, to me, Mr. Chairman, is approve something. We don't know what it is and we don't know how much it's going to cost. So it could cost hundreds of thousands of dollars or it couldn't cost nothing. So they're asking us to approve something we don't know what we're talking about. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Greg, does, Blue Ridge anticipate that the volume of traffic at the emergency room in Valdez will decrease and increase at Grace Hospital now that the announcements have been made?
Are you asking me, Mr. Chairman?
I was asking you, but looking at them.
Okay.
So they would maybe nod to you or something so we get a good answer.
I don't want to speak for Blue Ridge.
Let's let them speak then.
But I think we all are in agreement that I think the ultimate goal is that they're going to quit the admission of patients into Valdez, they're going to put some money into making the Valdez emergency room bigger and better and that over a period of time, whether that's a year, two years, three years, is that things will balance out and the higher acuity patients or the sicker patients will be going to Grace and the patients who won't most likely need admission into hospital will start to go to Valdez because when you have sicker patients in the emergency room at Grace, it increases the waiting time for other patients because it takes a lot more time and resources to take care of the sicker people. So if you have a lower acuity patients at the Valdez Hospital, their wait times will be far less. Word of mouth, people will start to go to Valdez. So I think the goal is, I hope and they're free, the goal is that the numbers increase at Valdez emergency room down the road, but the admissions don't follow that same trend.
Okay. Any other questions? We clarified everything. All right, gentlemen, you've heard the report from Greg. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the agreement as presented.
Heard the motion by Wayne. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? That would be three to one, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks from Valdez for joining us tonight or Blue Ridge. All right, now we can move on to Department of Social Services, creation of four child protective services, social work, investigative assessment and treatment positions, word of mouthful, and one income maintenance caseworker, two position at no cost to the county, presented by Derayne Hernandez, DSS Director, and Margaret Schumacher, administrative officer, two ladies.
Hi, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. We're thankful that you allowed us to be on the agenda this evening. It's not typical for us to ask for positions at this point in time during the year, but it's also not typical for the state to give you $144,000 for protective services, social workers, and not typical to have a hospital say that we value your work and we want to pay for a position within our facility. The state has given us $144,000 towards salaries of child protective services, social workers in an effort to reduce the case load sizes. It's typical for our staff to have twice as many cases as is recommended by the state and sometimes up to three times as many cases than they should have. So the staff are very excited about the opportunity to get more staff in there. We've had six turnovers already this year and as they were leaving, we looked at how many cases each of those social workers had and they were 19, 22, 21, 37, 25, always above what it should be. So we're very excited about the opportunity to utilize that funding and wanted to do it as quickly as possible, so we appreciate you allowing us to be here to ask for that.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard the presentation by Derayne. Any questions for her or Margaret?
Just like the fact that you said it's not going to cost, that's the best part.
Easiest decision of the day.
I think so. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I have.
Oh, you have a question, Jack? I'm sorry.
You said it doesn't, it's not going to cost the county any money to do this, but I read the comment in the paperwork I got was if it's not funded, we will find revenue within our budget to continue that. Is that in there somewhere in those comments?
That's correct. We have the funding that's been given.
So my question is, if you have funding now that you could fund those, what's, how do you come about that?
There's enough funding for this year to cover nine months with the funds that are available. The state is saying that they're going to give more funds. They may, Margaret's pretty confident that they're going to give our county more, but at this time, we don't know. And so if we just take that off the table and look at the funds that we've been given, we'll be able to support those positions in several ways. One of the ways is we estimated high, we estimated the cost of a position at the highest rate and it takes our social workers three years to get to that $37,000. So they're not going to walk in the door and start with that amount. So there's some funding there. The state's given two other pots of money, there's other funding available, but you've got to have the social workers code in a specific way in order to draw that money down and we intend to do that as well. So if it doesn't cover that full fourth position, there's other ways to get that. And then you will always have, with just the number, the volume of staff that we have, you will have turnover and there will be funds left over. So those are all ways that we can help make sure that those positions are covered.
You just said you lost how many people recently?
Six.
Six?
This year.
So have you refilled those or are you expected to refill those?
Right, we're in the process of refilling those and that happens where we, it's a difficult job to do and so it's not uncommon that you would have more turnover in those areas. You're working with people that have significant mental health issues, sometimes have substance abuse issues in there, they've been to prison at times. That's not all of the families that we work with, but there's a large amount of them and we're getting kids right out of school, right out of college, coming in and doing this type of work and they'll figure out real quick, like either they can do it or it is not for them. So we'll always have a little bit of turnover there.
But the salary is very good.
The salary is a good salary. There are other counties in the surrounding area that pay a little more. It's typical for our department and it has been for a while to take the kids right out of school, get them trained and ready to go and then when they feel comfortable and they're realizing how much of, how many college loans they have and car payments they have, there's times where they'll just go somewhere else, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I think on the income maintenance person, the hospital is offering to fund this position, so that's one of the positions that, out of the positions, that'll be funded.
I do.
All right, any other questions for Derayne or Margaret? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I move to create four child protective services, social work, investigative assessments and treatment positions and one income maintenance caseworker, two position with stipulation that these positions only exist as long as no county funds are required and move to increase the fiscal year 14, 15 budget accordingly.
All right, you've heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that would be four to nothing. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate that.
We appreciate it very much.
That moves us on to our reports and comments from the board and let's start with Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'd just like to draw your attention to the meeting schedule for December. It's a little different. That was what the board adopted last year as their 2014 meeting schedule. Our organizational meeting and pre-agenda meeting will be on Monday, December 1st.
Let me ask you a question. Do we have a parade to go to on December the 2nd?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good, all right. Okay, Jack?
Nothing.
Jeff?
No, sir. No comment.
Brian?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Do want to update you, I got notice recently from Tom Lundey, the county manager in Catawba County, that Catawba County Commissioners had taken up the agreement that we had sent over regarding closing of Burke Catawba and taking their inmates and placing them in the new Burke County jail once that is constructed. So that's a positive, wanted you to be aware of that. Also, Scott, can you go ahead and show us the pictures of the EMS station that's under construction? I think we've got two pictures there. Wanted you to see where we are with construction of that new facility that is back behind the senior center here in Morganton. As you know, we've had some people temporarily placed there to see if moving them to that area would improve response times and from what I remember from Mr. Curry a while back, some of the calls that were answered and that are served by that office saved over three minutes in response time, which is a huge amount of time if it's a stroke or a heart attack that they're responding to. Also want to let you know that last night, myself and some other county staff members and a member of the North Carolina Department of Commerce held a meeting with potential broadband service providers to go over the information that we have accumulated over the past approximately eight months showing the surveys. There on the picture, you can see all those purple dots represent actual responses, surveys. We had over, I think I was told, 1,024 responses and that is the largest number of responses that the Department of Commerce has had for any county in the state of North Carolina to this date. So there's a very strong response. In the next photo of the broadband, you see those golden dots, I think they're golden, at least from here, they look golden. That shows the vertical assets that we found in the county that may be potential for use by these broadband service providers to provide, I guess, wireless internet access broadband service. And our staff did a huge amount of work in plotting where these facilities were, looking at them, seeing who owns them and the potential for them to be utilized if a service provider is interested in that. Again, the meeting was held last night. I believe there was about five different service providers present and we look forward to hearing maybe in another week or two. They were given a disc and there's a picture of the meeting last night, but they received a CD of all that information and some other that'd be a little cluttered if we tried to put it all together on the screen of the resources and the demand, the need for service here in Burke County. So I think once these service providers have had an opportunity to crunch numbers and look at opportunities and the lay of the land and the potential of vertical assets that may be available to them, we should be getting a response back to them about the next step in moving forward with the potential expansion of broadband service in Burke County. And I, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I really want to tell you how proud I am of Scott Black, Pete Minner, Scott Carpenter and possibly some other members of our GIS and IT support staff that were integral in putting this information together. I don't think anybody could have done a better job anywhere in the state of North Carolina. So our guys did a fantastic job and I want them to be recognized for that and I thank you for letting me share this information with you.
And I think to add on to that, Brian, we need to thank Keith Conover from the Department of Commerce for being the coordinator for most of these efforts. I'm proud to report that everybody but Charter was at the table last night, even AT&amp;T, which was kind of a surprise, showed up. So we do have a lot of interest on supplying broadband to our county and I hope that we can do that before the state school system decides to go to digital learning so we can beat that curve and our children will be ready for it when it comes. County Attorney?
No comments tonight.
All right, the only report I have, I'd like to report that I did attend a number of meetings, but the most important one was the North Carolina County Commissioners Association plan, our strategic plan to move forward with our legislative agenda. I'm a member of the Justice and Public Safety Committee as well as being on several others, but we're getting the goals together. Gentlemen, I encourage you to keep up with the reports that come from the County Commissioners Association so we can move forward with our legislature next year. One of the major things we'd like to accomplish is the 911 funding to give us some flexibility in how we will be able to use 911 funds. It's been very restrictive in the past, so I hope you, encourage you to stay in contact with our legislators when that comes in front of us for a vote at some time or another. We do have, we do need to go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege and discuss threatened or pending litigation. Pardon me, we need to make the vacancy announcements. Thank you, brother Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have the following vacancies on county boards and committees. Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Burke County Planning Board, Library Board of Trustees, Morganton Board of Adjustment for the ETJ, Voluntary Agricultural District Board, Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission. State vacancies include North Carolina Museum of Art, the Cemetery Commission, Environmental Management Commission and the North Carolina Finance Agriculture Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Sorry, I forgot that again. Let me also say that we are working on a new website as a work of love by Steve Bennett, our IT Director. We still have some areas of concern about the website, but please visit that and you'll see some of this information. And again, I invite everyone that's watching us tonight to please take advantage of these vacancies. There are numerous ones and we sure could use that help. Now, I would like to announce that we need to go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege and discuss threatened or pending litigation, discuss economic matters, economic development matters and discuss a personnel matter if necessary as authorized by NCGS 148318.11, paragraph 834 and 6. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to go into closed session.
All in favor, that's four to nothing. Let's take about a five-minute break before we go to the back. Thank you. All right, we had a proper motion to come out of closed session by Commissioner Abely. There was no action taken at this time. I'll have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, that would be four to zero.